This conference will now be recorded.
CEO of C-Trans, Mr. Sean Donahay, and he will be talking to us about some updates with C-Trans. Before we get started, I would just like to congratulate Sean and his management team and his wonderful staff and employees. They were awarded the 2022 North American Transit System of the Year. It is the industry's highest standard for awards that transit systems can achieve. So this will be the second time that C-Trans has received that award since 2019. So that's a tremendous accomplishment. You must be very proud of your team and your employees. And again, congratulations, Sean. That's a hell of an accomplishment.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We're very fortunate to have an amazing team. They're very proud of what they do. We had our 40th anniversary this year, so it was really interesting when we went to the historical society and we talked about the 40th. The one thing that we really sort of impressed upon was a lot less about C-Trans and a lot more about the life's work of our employees, because we've had employees that have worked there 35, 40, 45 years, some of which, in fact, Operator Haugren, who used to work for the city of the center at one point in time in his life, talked about when C-Trans came to fruition and he was actually working in the capacity of sort of an interim city management role here, working with between the center and Ridgefield, a few projects up in this neck of the woods, and then accepted the job at C-Trans and worked there for almost 40, oh, 40, 42 years. And so, you know, it's just couldn't be more proud of our folks. I mean, they do some amazing work and I'm just thankful for everything that they do. And so I appreciate that and I'll make sure we send that message back to our employees.
Thank you. Excuse me, just before, did you start the recording? Okay, good. We're good.
I didn't want to throw a presentation up today. I brought some handouts because they're a little easier to read than the presentation itself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So the big topic that has come up recently is every four years we're required to do a board composition. An RCW has been put into place by the Tacoma area that was voted through legislature a few years ago, and it changes the condition of the RCW. More specifically, it talks about how the composition of the board should be proportionate to the population. And I won't bore you with what the RCW says, but I'll give you a little backdrop on really where it came from. There were some issues in the Tacoma area where the board makeup was a little disproportionate to the population. And so there were, when they were trying to expand service in certain portions of the Tacoma region, they were getting voted down by non-populated cities that had majority votes on the board or some type of swing votes on the board, enough to sort of sway it a little bit. And we don't really experience those issues down here. In fact, one of the things that I think we celebrate about our board and one thing that I think the county and specifically the city of Vancouver appreciate is having the voices of all of their partners at the table. And so I think there's sort of a feeling that in the case of our current board composition, just based on population alone, and if you look at the second page there, it sort of breaks down the population by the city, county UGA, and then all of our partner cities within the county. There's a feeling that, at least from a legal perspective, and again, C-Trans really isn't too involved in the board composition, but in this case, we're working to, working in the best interest of all of our partners. There's a feeling by a legal interpretation that the city of Vancouver and Clark County should gain an additional seat and that our partner cities would lose a seat off of our board. So the current makeup right now is the city of Vancouver has three seats, the county has two, and every city has one seat with the exception of Ridgefield, LaSenter, and Yakult, which share a seat. I can tell you from our board's perspective, including the county and the city, that they are adamant that they prefer the current board composition as it is because it provides a voice for everyone. I feel very strongly the same way. I think that, to me, that's big city politics, trying to take voices away from cities that are growing and growing within the county. And while it may work for the Tacoma area, there's only three transit systems that are impacted by the RCW change. C-Trans, Pierce Transit in Tacoma, and Spokane. So we went back and we had a pretty robust conversation with our legal team at the board composition meeting. And, you know, I appreciate our legal, I appreciate our legal team. They do a good job of explaining what the risks are. But I think in the spirit of the RCW, it very specifically states that if and when applicable, or if it makes sense, and I'm paraphrasing a little bit, if it makes applicable sense to the agency, it must take into account the proportion of the population when it makes those board composition decisions. I believe that based on the population that exists in Clark County, we are proportionally represented by, by all of the members of the county that are within the public transportation benefit area. There are some concerns that the city and the county have also, that if they were to gain an additional seat, they would both have quorums on our board and they would prefer not to do that. In fact, I don't think, I think legally for them, there's some issues, at least at the city. I can't speak for the county, but I know that the county also does not want to have a quorum at our board meetings. The current setup of our board right now, I believe, does act within the spirit of the RCW, which is the city of Vancouver has the most votes, the county has the second most votes, and then one seat, one seat votes for the other four are shared amongst our partner cities. And I think when you look at the population itself, I think those votes are proportionate to the populations that exist within those jurisdictions. And so it was a little bit difficult for me to, you know, the board composition is really not for me, I'm supposed to stay out of that, but it was hard for me not to because we have a great partnership with all of our cities that are within the PTBA. And we felt very strongly that we wanted to make sure that our legal team knew that we did not agree with their interpretation of the breakdown of the RCW. I think that we have plenty of strong ground to be able to formulate a response to this and say that we believe that our composition is based proportionately within the spirit of the RCW and that adding two more seats doesn't solve a problem that existed where one city either didn't have enough votes or had too many votes. It would largely remain the same in terms of who has the most amount of votes on the board. So I think that's been our primary driver. We just kind of want to get out and I appreciate being asked to come up today and kind of talk about that first page there. What we did is we sort of broke down the population by where people reside within Clark County. I think there was a little bit of a surprise that Clark County UGA had as many people in because it's population within what we have bordered is the public transportation benefit area. That's not the whole county. It's either cities that agree to be in or when they did a, when it was first formed, there was an unincorporated county piece. It doesn't go all the way through. It sort of goes up through Hazel Dell, north to the fairgrounds, and then sort of east out toward Orchard's and comes back into where really battleground and camels are. So this map sort of represents where the population is, sort of in relation to how the population within the entirety of the transit authority works. So I'd be happy to take any questions on that. I know that's been a little bit of a concern. I actually have a meeting Monday with the city of Vancouver and their legal team to have a very similar conversation about what that means. I would tell you that we're, we're going to meet again in September, probably late September or mid-September with the entire board composition team, which is a little different than our board. It's a representative, one representative from every single city, and the county can actually send all of their councillors if they want. It's one of the, it's one of the only differences between our normal board comp and another is that the county can actually send all five of their councillors if they choose to. They've only sent three. Chair Bowerman is on our board, Councillor Lentz, and Councillor Rylander. So we've had really good conversation, I think internally, about how we want to manage these things, but I think that there's an overwhelming, if not a full consensus by our board that the current composition is the way that it should be, and we just need to sort of manage legally how we want to respond to the RCW in case we open ourselves up to any potential litigation. So does anybody have any questions for me about that?
That is one of my questions. What's the legal ramification of not doing or obeying the law?
Yeah, so if, if someone were to take legal action against us and they were successful in essentially proving to the court that we are not acting within the spirit of the RCW, the court could impose some type of a penalty against us. They could, most likely they would just tell us, we immediately need to change our board composition to however the court would define that board composition to be based on the population we give them. We did ask if, if we wanted to entertain a possible Supreme Court, to go to Supreme Court with it or to have one of our elected officials take this and have a review done by the Attorney General's Office. I think that was not the most popular decision that we put on the table, and I don't disagree with that. I don't know if that's the best course of action, but we were just really looking at what are all of our options in real time. You know, I, I think that the majority of anyone who's impacted by our board likes having the voice. In fact, I, one of the things that I countered with our legal team on was this has the potential to remove people from the public transit authority. And to be fair, I don't think I would blame a city for wanting to leave the public transit, right? If I don't have a voice on the board, why would I want to put my money toward that? And I was very clear with our legal team that I think we would have a legal foot to stand on if someone forced us to change it, that as a function of the RCW that we feel is being in practice done correctly, that now we would lose potential revenue and not be able to provide service to certain communities because they may want out. And that's, to me, it makes total sense. It's fair. I would never, I would never choose to argue with anyone on that basis because we shouldn't be taking voices away from.
So who are the people that can actually bring something like that to suit? I mean, is that just like an individual, like one of us can go and say, no, they're not following the law. We're going to file a suit against them or something? Or is it actually take an entity or governing body to say, no, you guys aren't following the law. You're going to have to do that?
The way that we legally look at it is, is anybody can bring a suit against us and say that a decision made by the board is null and void because the composition of the board is incorrect. And I think in this case, we feel strongly, and I think the majority of the cities do as well, that our board composition is in the spirit of the RCW. I don't think we would argue that. I think someone would, someone could try to say, based on the population, just as a standalone, the city and the county maybe should be eligible for one more seat, but we don't see it that way. We see it as that the city and the county that has the, the majority of the population have the majority of the votes on the board, and all of the other cities that reside have less than 10% of the population, in most cases somewhere between five and three. And we think that one vote on the board is, is proportionate representation.
Is there any monetary gain that somebody could get by doing this? Or is this just something that, hey, you got to slap on the wrist, we're going to, you got to go out and form a new board?
Yeah, I would say I don't believe there's any monetary risk to it. I think the risk could be decisions that we may make on projects could be voided out if they decide that the board was not a functioning board. And so that, I think, is the bigger issue for us, that if we engaged in a larger project and made a decision on something, how would that be impacted by not having the board align the way that someone, that a judge or that a court would interpret the RCW?
Thank you. That's enough questions for me.
Cool. And I guess the only thing I have, so I'm on the Board Composition Review Committee, and so I just asked that Sean could come here and kind of present to us so that I could kind of get a direction, if, or if you guys are okay with following the direction of what C-Trans is going with that decision, to kind of move forward, delete things as they are.
Oh, absolutely.
Because it is going to come to a vote at some point, so.
Yeah, I think what's, what's on here is, is more than reasonable. The only thing that I, in short, what, do you know what 3657A050 says? Because it just says, when determining the change to the composition, the proportion, it looks like that particular RCW has the proportion requirements. And is that, or what you're saying is, is that you believe you're in compliance with?
Yes, it's 3657A050 is essentially one of the original, and it gets amended from time to time, but it's the original RCW that states how a board composition has to take place as a function of a public transit benefit area. So that is the same for all agencies across the state. And this, 3657A055 is very specific to three geographical areas, Clark County, Pierce County, and Spokane County. And I would say there's overwhelming support, and again, I may go out on a limb and say unanimous that our board does not have a desire to change our composition at all.
Right.
And I, and I think the county and the city specifically have, I think, have really stepped up and said, we need to find a way to make this work because we, we appreciate the voices that are on this board. That's what, that's what makes us who we are, and to take those voices away is just the opposite of really what we're trying to do here in Clark County. And so.
So if someone brings a suit and to change the composition of this, who pays for the legal fees? Is this a C-Trans fee at that point, legal fee, or is the cities are going to have to split these fees or?
Yeah, I think if they were going to take up a suit, they would probably take up a suit with us, and I would imagine that we would, we would carry, carry the brunt of that.
Okay.
As much as I don't like it, we do occasionally get some suits filed.
Sure. Yeah, I don't see any reason to change it personally.
Yeah.
Thank you. Did you want me to talk a little?
Oh, yeah, I was going to say, could you just give us an update on what's going on with the I-5 bridge?
Yeah, so I found out last week that there's something going on with the bridge.
Wow.
So C-Trans, interestingly enough, is one of the eight agencies that have to sign off on the bridge because we're a, we're a transportation provider, but we also receive government funding. So it's the two DOTs, the, the two transit agencies, the city of Vancouver, city of Portland, and then the two ports that are impacted by the bridge influence area, they essentially sign off on things that happen in real time off the bridge. And it's been an interesting process, I would say fairly collaborative. We don't always agree on everything, but I think we sit at the table and we're very open and honest about things that we agree and disagree on. But we did get to a point where we voted the other day on what's called the Modified Locally Preferred Alternative. And to give a little background on that, to move the process forward without doing a full environmental impact study, we have to use portions of the original Columbia River Crossing design that was put forward, that locally preferred alternative that was put forward to the government back in 2010, 2011, when we put it to the federal highway. And so pieces of that we used, and a lot of it is still reusable, like the bridge is still in the same space. So from an environmental perspective, a lot of the things that are impacted are still the same. Things that have changed quite a bit since the CRC are how C-Trans manages public transportation versus how it did back in 2010. How freight is being administered. There's a lot of differences now between the Port of Portland and the Port of Vancouver. And frankly, we have an amazing group of ports. If you go out east on 14 and you go north on 5, I mean, we just have, there's a slew of commerce there that really can't be interrupted, and we need to make sure that we're paying attention to those things in real time. It's not lost on me that we need to pay attention to environmental impacts, we need to pay attention to climate, and we need to pay attention to equity as a function of that, but that we also need to remember that this is a highway project. And for me, I think one of the things that we may be different a little bit is, I'm not trying to, C-Trans and myself personally, we're not trying to force people out of their cars. We're trying to provide alternative transportation solutions so that people who want to try something different have the ability to do that. You know, it's not for C-Trans to say, hey, you should sell all your cars and here's a bus pass, right? Like, that's a little bit irresponsible. I, I don't know if everyone shares that same thought process, but I think on the southwest Washington side of the river, we do. We do want to see active transportation be improved, bicycle, pedestrian access, especially freight access, right? Because the Port of Vancouver has a lot of what they call high wide heavy and long. So without having those instruments to be able to get freight up to speed across the bridge, we've got some real problems. The original plan for the CRC called for three through lanes in each direction, potentially fourth with two auxiliary lanes and two shoulders, and also included light rail through downtown Vancouver. One of the, one of the big things that we have changed is, is C-Trans has done a great, a great job, I think, of providing, really expanding service and putting in more bus rapid transit. And so we, we see the value of connecting to the light rail, but it shouldn't disrupt the work that's already being done on waterfront and the work that's already being done in downtown Vancouver. So we pushed for I-5 running to Evergreen. We didn't want to go any further than that at this time. So library squared Evergreen and we'll connect to it with the bus service. But one of the, all of the agencies that put forward toward the modified, the IBR team's suggestion is they'll take into an environmental process, three through lanes in both directions, one auxiliary lane in both directions, and two shoulders, plus the, the transit component. Every agency that has an impact on what's called the Executive Steering Group has sent in a list of options, a list of conditions with their approval for the Modified Locally Preferred Alternative. And I would say it went through nine to zero, so the eight agencies on the Executive Steering Committee all voted it forward. The ninth was Metro Council in Portland, they voted it forward, and then the Executive Steering Group voted it to the by-state, which is all of our state electives from Oregon and Clark County here in Washington. But, you know, C-Trans was pretty specific about our conditions, and I can share a few of those with you. One of them specifically was in the original iteration of the CRC, in order to bring light rail across to Clark County, there was a, there was going to be a ballot measure that went forward to the voters for one, somewhere from a one to a three tenths percent tax just to cover the operations and maintenance of light rail. And we have stated adamantly that we don't operate light rail, and we will not pay for that. The, we're not saying that has to be tried out, we're just saying that someone else is going to have to pick up that tab. In fact, our condition in, our condition in the approval of the LPA is extremely specific that if the IBR team even, if one of their official asks is for C-Trans to do it, we immediately rescind our approval of the Modified Locally Preferred Alternative. A second piece of that is we don't want any parking rides. Parking rides create congestion downtown close to the river. There's a reason that Portland doesn't have parking rides in their downtown, and it's because they're great at 99th Street and they're great at Fisher's Landing to divert traffic away from downtown, and we would want to see much of the same if we introduce the new mode to traffic. So what we've said is, is if, unless there is a statistical or some type of data-driven reason why we would need to have that in there to secure some federal funding, we do not want parking rides either. My past life, before I worked in public transit, was freight and port logistics. So we added into our conditions some very specific language about the study of a second auxiliary lane, and we were very specific about if, if the data doesn't support a second auxiliary lane, but one auxiliary lane does not solve congestion issues, we need to look at a freight-only lane. And if we can divert freight traffic away from really general or mixed traffic, I think that will solve some of the congestion issues we're seeing in the, in the three-through lanes. And it'll, and the auxiliary lane between downtown and Hayden Island will really, Marine Drive will give us an opportunity to sort of divert some of that merged traffic that slows everything down. What else was in there? We, we just very firmly believe that some of the conditions that existed in the first iteration cannot be a thing this time around. We've been very active in trying to spread the voice of Southwest Washington as a whole. So C-Trans trying to work with the ports, we want to work with the cities, we're working with everybody who has a voice. Interestingly enough, I'm the chair of the RTC this year, so it was a little different for me to have to go to the RTC and like put the C-Trans head off to the side and talk about all the other things that are really impacted by this bridge. And I think there's sort of a unanimous thought that this thing needs to happen, but the conditions of how we do those things need to be very specific. I've been, I've asked a lot of questions about pushes toward electric technology. They, they talk about vehicle miles traveled a lot as a function of climate reduction, and I'm not suggesting that's not important, but that we've graduated to a space where you can't really use vehicle miles traveled as a function of climate because we're introducing at a very high rate, electric vehicles to the street, right? So either you're using vehicle miles traveled as a function to reduce climate, which could be, and you're also using vehicle miles traveled to reduce congestion. So you have to be, we've asked them to be honest about what they want out of the equation. You're trying to reduce congestion, or you're trying to solve climate, which one is it? And if it's both, that's fine, but you can't use one as a catch-all. You have to, you have to break that data set down. You know, I support it. I know our board does. We've had a lot of, a lot of good conversations and a lot of good energy toward it. It's just a matter of, you know, I think it was said best during one of the SUVs, we finally made it to step three of 100, so we'll see what happens. And I, I think the important part is we're still taking in information. I think people thought when we approved the Modified Locally Preferred Term, like that was it, we're moving forward, thanks for all your input. And we've been very adamant, like this is really where we need your input because outcomes that are associated with the decisions we make will really be driven from information that we receive from the community. So I'm excited about the process. I'm anxious to see it move forward, but we need to make sure that we're protecting the best interests of Clark County and Southwest Washington. So I hope that we were able to do that amongst the partner agencies who had conditions on this side of the rivers.
How come you're so against light rail?
Oh, I'm not.
Oh, you sound like you were not, you just don't want to pay for it. You don't want to be responsible financially for that you want them to.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll tell you why. Since 2010, we've spent $92 million on express service to Portland that they benefit from the taxes on. They get, they get payroll tax, they get all the revenue from businesses that enjoy Clark County workers in there. I'm for all modes of transportation. I just think that to ask us to pay for something that we have already been doing for decades, I think is a little bit of a fool's errand on their part, right? Like it's.
I see. So you're not against it, you just want to negotiate how the terms are.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, realistically for me, the original plan didn't work for me. Running it through the middle of downtown is not a good utilization of space in downtown Vancouver. And I, you know, I've built streetcars and I've built, in fact, my deputy CEO and I, she and I, we, we came here from Fort Worth, Texas. We built a $1 billion, 27-mile commuter rail line from the airport to downtown Vancouver, or downtown Fort Worth. So that'd be a long way from there.
Yeah, I was like, what? I must have missed out. That's that one.
We got a pretty good deal. But, you know, like, so, so we get the rail aspect of it, but it's about responsible transportation, right? And to me, the responsible piece is, is when the CRC failed, we bet everything. We bet our reputation, we bet all of our capital on building bus rapid transit to move our, our customers and our county efficiently. And so we want to see that connection. It's definitely something we want.
Yeah.
I just think from the, passing that responsibility on to taxpayers who already want a robust transit system that we're offering is, is not the best utilizer of our tax dollars.
Yeah.
So why are you guys keeping the lanes down between three and four lanes each way? That's, I'm trying to understand that because you already have four lanes on the 205 side and it's packed. And to me, you're going to spend $2 to $6 billion on a new bridge, I want to see that go in for the next 40, 50 years, right? And at this point, our growth is accelerating tremendously. So three, four lanes is going to be outgrowing while it's already outgrown. I mean, to me, it's almost a waste of money at that point. I'd rather see, you know, five, six lanes or close off and just have that shoulder ready for a sixth or seventh lane. I mean, we only have two crossings to go into Portland, and as somebody that goes back and forth in Portland, it is the worst experience there is. And, you know, I, I go into LA, I go into Vegas, I go into Orlando, they have traffic, right? But they have other routes to go. I can jump off, I can take the 101, I can be out of the 405 area with no problem, right? Here, there is no other way. So if we're not planning that far in the future, why is that?
Yeah, I think that's a good, that's a great question. And I, I don't disagree with you. I think part of the issue that exists is the bottleneck at the Rose Quarter, that no matter what we do on this side, eventually we're going to bottleneck at the Rose Quarter. One of the things that I think Clark County has pushed for a little bit, but for some reason, some of our partner agencies have been really reluctant to have in the conversation is an alternative option, a third bridge or a fourth bridge. And so when I came on the RTC five years ago, I was adamant with Chair Quiring at the time, that is something C-Trans would support, because, I lived in Cincinnati, we had eight bridges. I mean, I had multiple options to get across the river at any point in time.
Right.
And, and you need to have those. One, for disaster recovery purposes, and two, because you have to divert some of that traffic. And there's a lot of freight traffic right now on 205, and if you go to 205, 5:30, it's blown out.
But why is the, the commission so concerned about the Rose Quarter area, right? Because that isn't, that goes back to Oregon, as long as we're taking care of this crossing, then we can concentrate on that problem, either at the same time or afterwards, but we're planning for the future.
It does.
And I thought Governor Brown had already signed something that said that they were going to be doing work in that area, of some sort of expansion or tunnel, or, I, I, it was a few years ago.
They are. I, I think the, the long-term thought by the group is, is if we can maximize throughput on the bridge for the next 25 or 50 years, at some point in time, they will be limited on the amount of expansion they can do at the Rose Quarter. Even if they just add in, say, two more lanes, or a lane and a half, a lane and auxiliary lane, it's, it's going to be very difficult for them to do that without impacting the equity of the area and, and some of the climate issues because of the way that the Rose Quarter is set up. And I think that's their long-term concern, is if we could, if we can maximize what we need out of this project and then move into the next project, that'll, that'll kind of help us out. And I, I definitely get what you're saying, I, I don't disagree with you at all. It's one of the questions I think Southwest Washington has had as a whole, is, you know, Portland, I think, wants no lanes, and we want eight lanes.
Right.
Where do we meet that, right?
And this is going to be a debt to our children.
Yeah.
This is not something that we're going to pay off in our lifetime at that point, so, yeah. Well, thank you very much for that, I appreciate that update.
Yeah.
And for coming in, gentlemen.
And I appreciate the invite, and again, thanks for the, thanks for the shout-out. We got, we got a good group, and we always appreciate getting out and talking to everybody. And I'm just very thankful for the invite tonight. If you ever need anything, just email me, I'm usually pretty quick on the return, so if you ever need anything, please.
I need an extra lane.
Yeah, I'm kidding, I need my all-in lane, actually.
My email is GregJohnson@IBR.
Okay, Sean, thank you very much, appreciate the presentation, and again, congratulations, and appreciate all that you're doing, that's awesome.
I appreciate you, too, it's been amazing to be able, I just had my fifth anniversary here in Clark County a few weeks ago, and I was fortunate enough to sign that contract extension a couple of years ago. And I love this place, I love being in Clark County, it's my favorite, one of my favorite places I've lived. And part of it for me is, we can have robust conversations that we don't agree on, and people don't necessarily get their feelings hurt, all that stuff. I've lived in a lot of places where that's dangerous territory.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I just, I just, I love it here, it's just.
That's the point of collaboration, you have to have, yeah, all the sides, yeah, exactly. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes our work session for this evening. We can go ahead and adjourn, and we will have our city regular, regularly scheduled city council meeting at 6:30. Did you have something?
Then the tribal casino opened, and our card rooms took a huge hit, as did the city's revenue. Two of the four card rooms closed, and there was a distinct possibility we were going to lose the other two as well, which would have been devastating to the center. After much deliberation, the city council voted wisely, in my opinion, to change the way the card rooms were taxed. We adopted a sliding scale that would allow the card rooms to pay a smaller percentage on the first $400,000, and the percentage would increase in increments until it reached 15%. The idea was that this would help the card rooms to survive. We would share the hard times together, but had the potential to reap even more revenue if the good times returned and the card rooms thrived. In short, it was a fair arrangement for both the city and the card rooms. They were faced not only with declining customer traffic, but confronted with ever-increasing costs such as labor, utilities, property tax, and all the other costs associated with a business. When their costs rise, other businesses raise the price of their product or service to maintain profitability. Unfortunately, the card rooms cannot increase prices because they are not selling a product or a service. Their revenue has been, and always will be, locked in to whatever they took in, lest the winnings they paid out to their patrons. If we lost the two remaining card rooms, that source of revenue, which has sustained the city for so long, would be gone, and the two remaining card rooms were struggling. No business can continue to accumulate losses and remain in business. The council wisely decided that 6% or 7% of something was far preferable to 10% of nothing, and if the card rooms could not make a profit, they would close. Because of that decision, we still have two card rooms in the center. Fortunately, one of them has begun to recover, but the other is still under a strain. Should it close, it is simplistic to think their customers would just gravitate to the sole remaining card rooms, and our total revenue would remain the same. Although the card rooms are competitors, they need each other. Both attract people to the center, and these customers go back and forth between the two card rooms. Should one of these card rooms close, the other will likely see a decrease in revenue. Whether that decrease would cause it to close as well is unknown but a possibility. Should both card rooms close, they're gone forever, they will never come back. The present tax, tax structure is working for the benefit of both the two remaining card rooms and the center.
So, excuse me, Jack.
Although the business of the card rooms is gambling.
Jack.
The center is not in that business. Let's not gamble on the city's financial future by tinkering with the card room taxes paid for political short, for potential short-term gain and long-term disaster. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Al.
Al, fellow 152 West 15th Street, I agree 100%, but Jack said, you mostly heard me give that spiel, you know, we, the card rooms have done a fantastic job of supplying their tax money, and I just want to keep seeing them, you know, pay the tax money. I don't gamble. I do go over there once in a while and try to eat a decent meal, and I haven't found one yet, but, and haven't had good service, so, you know, unfortunately, but I, I do go over there and try and support them, okay? But that wasn't the reason I came up here. What we've got here in La Center is apathy, you know, you know, looking, there, of course, now a couple more people came in when I thought about this, you know, but, you know, we just don't get enough people to participate, you know? The council members, they know, they were over here under the tent the other day, and we had, we had, you know, I was surprised, we had a few people, but, you know, not nearly enough, as we should have got over 3,000 people. And a lot of you, you heard me make this analogy, you know, life is like a pot of stew. If, if, you got to stir that up or it burns to the bottom. So if we can get some controversial things, not, not too controversial, Mayor, but, you know, get going and get people all head up, full head of steam, you know, you know, maybe we get some better attendance, and at least it'd make me happy, which, you know, isn't really worth very much, but, okay, well, thank you and God bless America.
You can always have a discussion about fireworks, Al, that usually gets people in. Or marijuana, that was always a good topic as well.
Or the garbage cans.
Yeah, you have, so, thank you.
Signs, dogs, cats.
Skip.
Hi, everybody, my name's Skip, is this on? Yeah, Skip Curtis R., Skip Carlson, 35915 Northwest Jenny Creek Road, La Center. First thing I want to say is, welcome back, Greg.
Thank you.
It's nice to see you here, and it's good that you're here.
Yeah.
The only other thing that I'd like to throw out to the council, I've mentioned this, not to this council, but it's been quite some time, and that is the speed approaching, coming up at the Paradise Park Road, La Center Road junction up there, I really think that it's clearly placarded 35 and the slip lane off the freeway, and then it's placarded, slow down to 35. Both those are, it's way too fast, it's a dangerous intersection. And I don't know if it would take any more than just a motion to reduce it to 25 by the council, I don't think it's a public hearing thing. The speed up on the bridge is 25. I realize that law enforcement is a challenge, but a step in the right direction, that's a horribly dangerous intersection up there. Somebody will get killed one of these days. So, that's a comment, leave it at that.
Thank you. Thank you. Candy.
Candy Irish, 1653 East Heritage Loop, I guess I could go like that, in La Center. I would just like to say, I'm so excited about this weekend, kind of, you know? I mean, we've got a lot of things going on, this has just been a remarkable time for La Center, getting back to normal. And, but, I'm sitting here in the front row with three ladies, we all wear different hats at different times, and I just wanted to remind everybody that the museum is going to be present there, and we have got some really, really wonderful things that, actually, that Suzie has done and may come to fruition, you did. And anyway, we're inviting everybody to come in, we're not going to be open that day, but it is open on first and third Saturday. And Nelda, myself, we also are Lion members, and so we're going to have our root beer floats, and we picked up all the ice cream today, so, I mean, tell everybody to come on out. And then, exciting about the parade that's taking place, and I guess, basically, we've all been through a lot together, and I think this is kind of like the beginning of something new. I heard it said, and I'll talk real fast, by little gals that I helped interview before their interviews at Miss Teen La Center, which was an eye-opener for me, and that's, these young girls were all saying, it's like we're born again, because they were all, everybody was all, you know, alone, and now we're forced to be out in the world, the public, and our world is not the same. And we can look at it one way, it's not good, or it's an opportunity to make it better and to go forward, forget the past, go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter.
Good evening, Peter Rosenkranz, 1203 East Pioneer Loop, sorry, that's, so, I just had a couple things to pick up, or Candy left off. I, I do believe we're on the cusp of something great. I love La Center. I've began a lot of my speeches now with just plain, I love La Center, I love our amphitheater, I love the fact we have our days coming, we're gathering as a community, and to me, that's why I love living here, is being a part of a community. So in that vein, please vote, we have our election on August, by August 2nd, not just on August 2nd, so please vote. And the second thing is, with this heat, I know it's a luxury to have air conditioning, not everybody has air conditioning, so tomorrow from 1 to 6, we're going to open up the elementary cafeteria as a cooling station for folks to come and cool off if they need to, and, or just they want to socialize, that's fine, too, we'll drop some tables, have some card games out, or you can just sit and read a book in a nice air-conditioned area, but at least tomorrow. And then we'll look at Friday and maybe Saturday, I don't want to conflict with our days, but it's on the same area as the, next to the park, so people can get a chance to get out the heat. So, thank you.
Very cool, thank you.
Thank you.
And that was the middle school cafeteria, you said, or high school?
Elementary.
Elementary school cafeteria.
So that's all. Is there anybody in the audience that wanted to make a public comment that did not fill out a card? Okay, thank you. So if there are any callers this evening that would like to make a public comment, if you could please press pound six on your telephone and make your public comment.
Star six.
Pardon?
It's star six.
Oh, sorry, star six. Oops. Okay, not hearing anyone, we will move on. Clerk, do we have any public comments that need to be read this evening?
We just have one.
Please read it.
Terry Carcall, 922 East Heritage Loop, dear council members, just a note of appreciation and support of the ban on vendors at the bridge. Our town is so divisive, so angry, so political, the social media pages are explosive with rudeness, hate, and bullying. The loud abrasive few have destroyed it for all, but there are some specifics that have not been addressed earlier that have contributed to this outcome. The particular flag vendor has caused much controversy and attracts people who add fuel to the fire. As an educator of young adults, I am sensitive with children and teenager, when teenagers see adults behaving like this, we can do better. What I experienced on July 7th, as I drove into town to go to my home, the place of safety and peace from the group at the bridge was scary and demeaning. These three people holding a Let's Go Brandon flag and many other unrepeatable signs yelled at me saying, libtard, go get vaxxed, go get vaccinated, because I shook my head as I passed by, then like poorly behaved children laughed loudly to harass me. As a resident of La Center for 15 years, and the surrounding area for seven more, I have seen many changes. I have volunteered at the schools for many, many years, I have participated with my family in all the town's festivals and events. But what I am seeing now is shocking, the unprofessional behavior of the La Center School Board members on social media is disgusting, driving into town and being harassed like this should never happen. Some of my neighbors are scared for their own safety and for their property. One neighbor is flying the black American flag traditionally known as Take No Prisoners Alive. This was probably, probably bought from the flag vendor as I see it as part of his displayed merchandise. My family constantly worry about my safety as I am now a senior citizen who lives alone. How did we get here? What is wrong with our residents? How do we fix this? I wish I could attend city council meetings, but I am a high- meetings, but I am a high school teacher in Vancouver. These past two years of having you working 10 to 12 hours a day, as we do not have staff to cover anything from morning to night activities, I am exhausted and vote to elect people to handle issues in this town. And I have never sent a letter to you, but I do so now in the future, as you need support and feedback, especially when you make hard decisions that I support 110%. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes the Assistant Public Comment period. Next is the Consent Agenda. Unless there's any requests for items to be removed, may I have a motion to remove the consent agenda?
I motioned that way. Can we move the interlocal animal control item?
You don't have to make a motion, but you want to see the
Yes.
Your local animal control removed from the consent agenda down to 2.9 items removed from the consent agenda?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any other items that the council would like to remove from the consent agenda before we vote on the remaining consent agenda? If not, can I get a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda with the animal control interlocal agreement moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda and moving the interlocal animal control agreement to the item, agenda item 2.9. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you. We have no presentations this evening or proclamations, so next will be the mayor's report. I do have a few items I would like to share this evening with the council. First of all, I would like to thank Mayor Pro Tem Servini for filling in for me during my absence. Liz, you did a great job. I really appreciate everything that you did. You not only connected to the city council meetings, but you attended many events, went to several ribbon cuttings and went to mayor's meetings. And yeah, it was quite a, quite a heavy lift, but I appreciate everything you did and thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
It's very much appreciated. And then I'd also like to thank the directors and the city staff for continuing to work so diligently and hard on city business. I know that the city's in good hands and everybody has done a phenomenal job. So thank you for that. Yes, a lot of peace of mind when you know you have a good team that's taking care of business. And then I would also like to thank the community, community members that have shared with me their wishes of getting well, their, their kind thoughts, and most importantly, their prayers. So, again, thank everybody for all the support. Thank you Candy for talking about our days. I have a little blurb on that here as well, but you did such a good job. I think I can just sort of quickly review that this weekend we will be having our days. The Twilight Parade is on Friday evening. There will be a movie at the amphitheater at dusk. Then on Saturdays, the hour days celebration will happen at the Holly Park. So again, I hope everybody's able to come out, attend and enjoy. And there'll be a lot of activities for children and I, that's probably the most exciting part of our days is to see all the kids out there having such a great time. And I suspect that the, the water park or the water feature will be very heavily utilized. And also, this Sunday will be the next Concerts in the Park, July 30th at 6:00 PM. Fortunate Son will be performing. And again, it'll be Sunday, August, or excuse me, Saturday, August 6th. I'm sorry. Did I get that right?
Third day is not the sixth. That's the second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Saturday, the
July 30th. I'm sorry. I got, I think I better get some reading glasses here. Okay, thank you.
Take a print.
Yeah. And then also, the, the city will be having a national night out on Tuesday, August 2nd, from 4 to 7 at the community center. So bring your families out to see police cars, fire trucks, fire trucks. We'll have hot dogs served by the city and we'll even have some cornhole lanes set up for people to play cornhole. So it should be a fun time for everybody that wants to attend. I did receive notice that this week's farmer's market at the La Center Church has been rescheduled to August 4th, Thursday, August 4th. So there will not be a farmer's market this week because of the high temperatures. So I just want to make a note and make sure that they're aware of that. And then the other thing is, I just wanted to update the council real quick. Chief Richardson will not be here this evening to deliver his report. The report's in your packet. Everybody can take a look at the report. He will be at the next city council meeting. But I just wanted to let the council know that the city continues to have conversations with both the City of Ridgefield and the City of Woodland. We are continuing our pursuing options for providing police services for the center and those conversations are continuing. And we do have meetings scheduled for next week as well. So that's all I have for the council this evening. Any questions? Okay, so next is the attorney's report. Bronson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council, members of the public. First, it's great to see you.
Thank you.
We've been in touch with each other through email and on the phone, but it's something like being in person and being together again, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. My favorite subject is
Riverside.
Riverside Estates. You got it. So let me give you an update on what's going on with Riverside Estates. Hopefully you've had a chance to swing by Riverside Park and look at the progress there. It is just about done. The last item to be completed on that is just dialing in the irrigation system. And when that's done, we'll be in a position to accept the construction of the park. Well, that, and then there's a maintenance bond that will need to be posted. So a two-year maintenance bond to guarantee the maintenance on any of the improvements of the sprinkler system, that will be posted and that we will accept. Once that's all done, we will be able to close on the purchase of the park. So a little over a year ago, you approved a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of the land and the improvements of Riverside Park. And so, just to remind you, that purchase price is $175,000. So, pretty good deal. The cost of the park is roughly 1.6 million in terms of the, just the improvements to it. The funding for that purchase will come from our park impact fee account. So it's not going to be a hit on general fund. It'll be out of the impact fee fund. An added benefit of closing on the purchase of that park is we will also, at the same time, accept conveyance of easements over the utility tracks. So if you remember, part of the problem with, in the receivership that I dealt with was there were liens on all our tracks where we have sewer and water and stormwater facilities. So when we close on the park, we'll also do a conveyance by the receiver to the city of easements over all those tracks. And the receiver has the legal authority with the court approval, which has been granted, to convey those to us free and clear of any liens. So we'll clear up all the liens on all those tracks. When that's done, and then a maintenance bond is posted for the improvements in Phase 2, which is 50 lots in Riverside Estates. So, you know, there's, again, roads and utilities put in as part of that Phase 2. They need to post a maintenance bond two years to guarantee the upkeep of those improvements. But when those liens are cleared and the maintenance bond's posted, we'll be in a position to finalize Phase 2 of the subdivision. And that will, please God, and my legal involvement in Riverside Estates. Okay. That is, concludes my report on Riverside Estates and I, I don't have any other items to share with you, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Bronson. And again, thank you for all your hard work. It's, that has really been quite the project. I appreciate everything that you have done. And I also just want to remind the council that that park was never contemplated when that development was first presented to the city. That was something that was actually thought of and pretty much was a result of Jeff Swanson's ideas, working with the different developers that were working on the project at the time. There were some, you know, before it went into receivership, there were three or four different developers that were working on it, partners. There was also three parks or four parks actually planned before they created the big Yeah, they had some little pocket parks, but there was nothing of the magnitude or the significance that we're going to enjoy from this new park. So, again, because of Jeff's hard work and, and really conceptualizing the plan and the park and putting together a plan and all Bronson's legal work is, not just because of the park, but everything else that was involved with Riverside. They really did a phenomenal job and really brought it to a great conclusion. And that park would be a great amendment for, for the city of La Center. And it's, I'm thrilled by the way it turned out. And it really did turn out to be a good deal for the city as well. So, thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Bronson. That was awesome work.
And just one other note, those parcels that were going to be parks will be maintained as open space and maintained by the homeowners association. So
My kid's dad lives over there, so I'm super excited to get to play with that park. So. I'm excited. They can use it. I don't have to go across town every other week.
Okay, so next on the agenda are council comments. Councilmember Fox?
Good evening. Welcome, everyone. Nice coming out on, even in the heat, but you got some nice free AC. So, yeah, just looking forward to this evening. I don't have much to say. Just looking forward to this weekend. I mean, it's going to be so nice just to get back to some of our old roots here in La Center. Living here my whole life, I've, you know, always participated and loved coming to the parade. And I've had my business in the parade a few times before COVID. And it'll just be really nice to reunite the community. And I'm super excited to participate in the parade with the city council. So I'm excited to have our boys and all our children out together. So that'll be super fun. Also just a reminder, yes, I'm just, you know, vote for our school levy. Levis are for learning. If you're going out of town this weekend, please get in the mail. It's due on Tuesday, the 2nd. So make that a top, top priority, please. And yeah, just a shout out to my son. It's his birthday today. He's turning 10. His name's Daniel and he goes, he's going to be in fourth grade at La Center. And yeah, we're going to participate on Sunday. So he's participating with other family. But anyway, happy birthday to him. And yeah, just happy to be here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Casper?
Thank you. Welcome back. Looking forward to getting back into the swing of meetings and getting some things taken care of. I too wanted to remind everybody to vote. I think that's, that's something that is, that is critical. It's easy to forget, especially in the summertime when it's busy. So make sure you get those in the, either in the mail, or we do have a ballot box in town over next to the, at the end of the parking lot, right across from the splash pad and the ballpark. So 8:00 PM on Tuesday is when it has to be in that box. So make sure you get it there. I'm looking forward to our days this weekend. My wife and I will be participating in the parade and I've invited the council and some of the city employees to ride. We'll have two antique fire engines that we're going to be driving. So that should be a good time. It'll be the first time I've participated in a evening parade. So I'm looking forward to that. We talked a little bit about some of the construction. You know, there's a few different projects. There's some work that's being done on Aspen up just to the north of 18th. And then, of course, the big project. So remember, share with your neighbors to be, to be patient. They're actually getting people through the big project here fairly quickly. I was impressed. I've been through it a couple of times. So I know it can be frustrating, but it's summertime and it's a late start to the summer. So construction across the whole county is, has been delayed. And then the last thing is, I was at the farmer's market last week and saw a lot of familiar faces, saw some new faces. It was a, it was a really good time. So got to chat with some people. The pastor had some preset questions that he threw out there where we got to discuss that a little bit, answered a few questions from, from the crowd as best I could. So I was going to go back next Thursday, or this coming Thursday, but it's canceled. So now I don't have to really remember what I said the last time, I suppose. So.
Did he suggest to you that our lobby needs furniture?
No, I'd just be happy if we could get a little cooler earlier. But anyway, thank you all for coming and that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boyle?
Good to see everybody. I don't really have too much. One thing I was going to say, just a reminder, I, I don't know, just to maybe get it out there that I believe that me and the other council members are dedicated to getting some sort of public safety brought back with law enforcement to the city and, I mean, the mayor, you know, what he said just to reiterate that. It's very important to us. It hasn't fallen off the table. It's just taken some time and we're looking into all the different avenues that we need to, to try and get that done correctly and what's best for the city. So that's pretty much all I have for that.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a very high priority for the city and we are working diligently at it. But you're right, it takes time. So, but hopefully we'll have more to report on here very soon.
Councilmember Strowman?
I don't have much to say. I'm excited for this coming weekend. I think it's going to be a great time. I expect to see a lot of happy faces and a lot of kids and families out there. I'm a little nervous of riding on a fire truck with Casey driving because I've seen him drive. So I'm going to buckle up and wear a hard hat.
They don't go fast, but they stop even worse.
But that's pretty much all I have tonight, Mayor. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Servini?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to welcome you back and tell you how relieved I am. And I just appreciate all the work that you were doing behind the scenes that people aren't aware of. You still had your hands in the daily activities. And so, things were moving. And I think we all can appreciate that. And as you said, governments all tend to move at their own snail pace, it seems. So unfortunately, we aren't as far along as we'd like to be with the police negotiations, but we continue to prod them diligently and keep the other parties on task.
Yes, yes, we can.
I would also like to mention attending Chairman Dave Barnett's Celebration of Life Saturday, which was extremely well done at A-Lin-A and, and a lot of people there and a lot of, of great comments from people that he interacted with at the government level and even individuals that he went through school with and, and camp. And so it was a great reflection on his life. And I, I'm sure his family felt a, a great sense of peace from what the comments were made. So I was happy to be there. And Sean and the mayor were also there with us. So we were well represented. I also gave some introductory, brief introductory comments at the Miss Teen La Center, La Center Pageant. And it was great to see all the people out and the, the hard work that Linda and her team does each year to put that together. So we owe them a debt of gratitude to make that happen for the young ladies. And I know there was a lot of excitement in the room. Other than that, you're probably safer riding with Casey than you are with me and the dump truck and the trailer. So those are your choices for the parade. So we'll be out and try to make it a great day for So we'll be out and try to make it a great day for evening and day for everyone. So we look forward to seeing all of you as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So next on the agenda are staff reports. As I mentioned earlier, Chief Richardson is not here this evening. The council does have his report in their agenda packet and he will be at the next city council meeting. So if you have any questions, he'll be returning back to La Center towards the end of this week, so he'll be available by phone or if you want to set up a meeting with him. So the other staff report we have this evening is for the administrative services staff report and Maria will be presenting the report this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Thornton and City Council. Tonight I bring you the July staff report. The June sales tax disbursement was $53,772 compared to $88,511 last year. And I attended a CREBC event entitled Engaging the Next Generation. I also attended a crisis intervention training and the quarterly training sponsored by the Department of Revenue. And then Desi Allender Nelson virtually attended the Montana Summer Institute 2022, Navigating Transformation with the Science of the Positive. And thanks to La Center United for sponsoring that for her. And then through the first half of the year, we have collected just over $850,000 in gambling tax. And I also don't have it on here, but I, I wanted to mention that we have had a couple of comments about the sound and not being able to hear the council. And so we are working on that. I just wanted to let community members know that we're working on that. And then next up, I will be doing a report on the card rooms. So we'll talk about that separately, but does anybody have any questions?
No, it's nice to see the sales tax revenue staying, you know, relatively good for not having the middle school construction going.
Yeah, very true. Okay, any other questions or comments? All right. So tonight, uh, we will cover some background about the card rooms and our current ordinance. We'll talk about other taxes that they, the card rooms currently pay. We'll discuss some industry changes. We'll look at the tax history and then we'll look at what increased taxes would be and the impact. And then we'll close with some discussion. So first of all, you have the city code, which I have printed out in front of you. In 2018, the sliding scale was presented and adopted for a year. Then in 2019, it was adopted going forward. Sorry, I was trying to get that zoomed in for you. Oh, there we go. So that scale that was adopted was 5% on gross revenue up to $400,000, 7.5% on gross revenue between 400,000 and 700,000, and 10% on gross revenue between 700,000 and $1 million, 12.5% on gross revenue between 1 million and 1.3 million, and then 15% on gross revenue over 1.3 million. In addition to the taxes just mentioned, the card rooms are still paying all other taxes that businesses in La Center are paying. That includes property tax, liquor tax, sales tax, utility taxes, BNO tax, which is 1.6%. And then not a tax, but the ERUs for sewer and stormwater, and they are the city's largest customer for sewer and stormwater. Some industry changes that we've seen is the minimum wage increase, which was $11.50 in 2018, when the sliding scale was adopted and it is currently 1449 an hour, which is a 26% increase. They're a very labor heavy industry. They are required to have a number of staff on duty, which include a wide range of staff from supervisors to cage operators and dealers and general manager, runners and surveillance and security. There's also paid sick leave requirement that's been implemented and there's a cost of maintaining the closed card room properties. That includes property taxes, insurance, maintenance, utilities. They're still paying ERUs for sewer and stormwater on the, to the city on the properties that are closed. And then in addition, as Mr. Davis mentioned, card rooms can't just raise their prices when costs increase. Their revenue is dependent on the number of customers and the net win percentage. Although there is some revenue from their restaurant operations, we have seen those prices increase. The bulk of their revenue is from the card room operations. And then next is the history, which I show each month, but I had added in 2016, which is before A-land A opened. When A-land A opened in the spring of 2017, I believe it was, it actually did drive our numbers up a little bit when people started exploring the area, but then, as you can see, that quickly dropped. And then next, you can see the percent of general fund revenue that the card rooms provided from 2016 until present. And so in 2016, it was almost 70% of our general fund revenue and it is currently at 42%. And then with the loan numbers in 2020 and 2021, the six and a half year average is at 42%. And then next, you can see our monthly breakdown for this year. You, I actually, these are in your packets as well. I know it's a little hard to see on the screen. So you can see the revenue for each month of the individual card rooms. We usually don't show that to you guys. We only show a, the combined, but this is actually each card room broken down. The rate that they are paying that month and then what the impact would be if you implemented a 10%. Can you zoom in on that a little more, Alex, so that audience can see?
Thank you.
So as you can see, one card room is doing significantly more revenue than the other and it currently they're paying almost 9%. Because of the sliding scale, they actually are paying 15% on some of their gross revenue, which helps to bring up their average. Then in the FAR column, you can see the, what the difference in the tax revenue would be if there was a change. So the card room that is making less money right now would have to pay a fair amount more in taxes if you did a set 10% flat tax. And then on the next page is the breakdown for 2021. And then you also have those in front of you as well. Do you have any questions or discussion?
Thank you, Maria. That was a perfect report. Appreciate it.
You're a chuckle.
Any questions by the council?
Yes, yes, questions. Why is this being brought up now? Why aren't we holding off until the end of the year so we can actually verify these numbers are not just a fad or something of a fluke of some sort? Why has this been brought up right at this present time? And where did we come up with a hypothetical 10% tax?
Well, you have asked at two meetings for a breakdown of card room. And so, and then the 10% was what it was previously. And then at our budget advisory committee meeting, we knew that you had brought that up. And so we presumed that 10% would be a, because that's what it was prior. So that's what we gave as a hypothetical.
Right. But when I brought that up, I asked for actual results or studies and all that. I didn't say anything about, hey, we need a resolution and we're just gonna jack the rates up. There was no, no discussion of that, even with you.
And this isn't a resolution or anything. This is just a, and this is our opportunity to have discussion.
This is just informative.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, there's no resolution. This is just a report.
If I'm wrong, I'm sorry. That's how I interpreted it. I was thinking, oh, we're gonna be talking about that. Jack has presented a comment tonight, so it really, yeah, it kind of, it came across that, that manner.
If there was something that was put out there that showed that it was a resolution other than just a report, please let me know and we'll look into that.
Sure. Yeah, thank you for providing this information. I think it's, I think it's imperative and I also think that it's important to look at as a council, especially with a city that has a deficit and, and has ran that way for a little bit and it's not sustainable. As you know, and I've spoken this before, I, I have my own company, mine are based on contracts and I have to actually do the same thing like the card room. I can't just go back to a client and say, hey, you know, minimum wage went up, I gotta redo, redo these contracts because that's not how it works. So I have to get creative and offer different type of services or sales in order to help that, right? I don't have that luxury of the state or the cities coming back and saying, hey, you know what, we're, we're gonna help you out. We're gonna do the sliding scale. So I'm not saying I'm opposed to the sliding scale. I'm just saying that there are other ways to look at it as well because when, you know, when the minimum, minimum wage comes up, then they need to get creative with their funds as well, right? It isn't always just the responsibility of the citizens to completely adapt to a business, right? The business also has to have that adaption as well. And I, and I agree with Jack's comments wholeheartedly, right? We need the card rooms to survive. It's just that, that's basic math. But I'm also looking at these numbers and the $177,000 is the biggest gain that we've seen since before, well, when you took office, actually. So.
Which $177,000?
For, I think it was for this, this month, wasn't it? In your, your actual, not this part, but the, the report there, yeah, 177, 19.
And where are you comparing that to?
Well, look at all the other years in the past, 161, 122, 91. I mean, we're going, we're going back here and we haven't seen those numbers in a very, yes, since 2016.
Well, you have to remember, Councilmember Strowman, that, you know, the card rooms were pretty much shut down for 2020 and 2021. And again, prior to A-land A opening in 2017. And that's just a little historical perspective here as well. So A-land A opened up in 2017 and for those of us that remember that day that it actually opened, traffic was literally backed up from La Center to all the way to Salmon Creek. It was, uh, so they, again, this isn't a criticism of A-land A. This is just so many people traveled to Clark County and to A-land A to be at that grand opening that it was just a huge overflow. And I think that for a short period of time, the card rooms actually benefited from that. So that's why I think that 2017 was a little bit of a softer blow to the card rooms and consequently to the city. But it became clear after 2017 that it was a significant impact. And if you could just scroll down to the bottom numbers, you know, it went from 3.1 million dollars down to 1.2 and then down to, it stayed pretty consistent. And that's what we were budgeting for 2019, excuse me, 2020, 2021 as well. But then of course, COVID hit and no one contemplated that. So that's just something that happened that, again, it was a, you know, very difficult time for all businesses and, and the community and citizens and households. So.
The city also adjusted.
Excuse me, I'm just not, I'm not quite done yet. So I just, again, if we're gonna be comparing numbers, let's make sure we're comparing them too. But I, I always like to go back to what happened before A-land A opened. But if you're just gonna compare it to what happened last year, then I don't know that that's really a, a good analysis of those numbers. Just my opinion.
Right. But this is also the first time that I've actually seen 2016 on the, the numbers in quite a long time. Before that, we were always looking at the 2017 numbers and I can appreciate that the COVID hit. The city as a whole, as, as you know, we sat and we voted that we would defer the payments until the end of the year and such. So we worked with the, the casinos or the card rooms in order to get our money. So we did adapt to that. My, my thoughts are is that we, we have a responsibility and we owe it to the residents in the town to actually evaluate this stuff. And that's why I, I've asked for these numbers, especially watching them creep up there. Actually, they're not even creeping, they're exploding. It's great. It's, it's wonderful. I love seeing them do great business. That also tells me they're doing something different than what they've had in the past as well.
They're pivoting, yeah.
They're, they're doing stuff. So that's bringing in more revenue and at that point, I, for me, I would like to take a look at this come towards the end of the year to where we can actually sit down and go, okay, so these numbers have stayed pretty solid or they haven't. And then make a decision as a council of what we'd like to do on the tax rates.
Well, it's also important to remember that if it was 10% before, well, and we're going back to that, we're not actually increasing it. I mean, because technically after how many years we should be, cost of living, what's, I mean, the cost for city employees as well. I mean, our costs are going, your costs are going up too, right? I don't, I mean, I would assume on both sides, so.
I think we also have to be aware of the fact that we, the one card room is, is now doing much better, but it has new ownership and new partnership. So there's new energy behind it. The other one continues to truly struggle and is also up for sale. So if we make too many drastic changes in terms of tax rates, we are also adding to another level of precluding another, a future buyer from coming in and having any interest. So I think it's a bigger picture that we have to keep in mind when we're talking about it, the whole story.
I agree. I agree. I, I didn't know it was for sale, but then that also brings up the point that because one is suffering, that the other one shouldn't.
Well, I don't know that it's public information either, but I probably misspoke.
It is now.
You know me, I just blurted it out there.
I just think we owe it to our residents and to the city as a whole to.
To look at the whole picture.
Yeah.
Of course.
And that's why I asked for these numbers on more than one occasion.
Has there been some sort of inquiring about adjusting the tax rate? I mean, I guess maybe I missed something, but.
No, the, no, the only inquiring was asking for the card room, a card room report. And I did want to add that across the state, that more than a third of the cities do have rates below 10%. In the, and in the past, I think it's four years since we had last had a presentation from Paul Lewis on this, there have been some reduction in taxes. So a couple of the bigger cities, Spokane Valley reduced from 10 to 6%, Spokane reduced from eight to 2%, and then Woodland reduced from five to 3%. And then Moses Lake went from 10 to 5%. They actually decreased on a sliding scale, so like 1% a year, I think it was. The larger cities also, those are the ones that are above 10% or at 10%. So Seattle and Toquilla.
Because they know that the population, they keep them happy.
Yeah.
Has anybody ever approached the tribe to see if there was any type of way to make an agreement where they held off on the poker and put it on paper so that we can continue with what we're doing? Because that's a lot of the revenue is by the poker players, right? And poker's not offered at the, at that casino.
Not yet.
Right? Yeah.
So, but that's not to say that the tribe won't do that in the future. And I don't know that it's not the safest place to try to make any of those kinds of agreements with the tribe. I think that the tribe does have plans to expand their operations at A-land A as well and who knows what that's ultimately going to include. So.
But isn't that kind of what we should be doing is having conversations like that with them? I mean, as, as a city and the tribe and being neighbors like that and something that actually affects us drastically.
It was discussed initially and they agreed to hold off on it. I think it was just for three to four years.
And the city has a whole list of agenda items that we want to talk with the tribe about. And we were moving forward with that agenda and then unfortunately Chairman Barnett passed away. So we have, I think, done the right thing by giving that some time and letting their new chairperson get her feet underneath her. We've already reached out to the tribe and we will be having some continuing conversations. But again, it's very difficult. I mean, the, the tribe is going to continue with expanding their operations, expanding the venues and it's going to be ever more, cause ever more significant impact on the city of La Center. So, and again, I just want to mention that the city, when the city council passed this ordinance originally, it was to work with the card rooms when the card rooms were struggling. And it was actually structured in such a way that when the card rooms did well, that their tax rate would increase and it would increase all the way to 15%. And ultimately, just like Maria said in her report, one of the card rooms is already approaching a 10% tax, which, which they were at that prior to enacting this new ordinance. Whereas the other card room is, is not quite doing that right now. So this really is fulfilling the intent of what the ordinance tried to address, is to work with the card rooms and to, you know, the city will benefit when the card rooms do well and when the card rooms aren't doing well, we won't receive the same benefit. But hopefully this would be some assistance to enable the card rooms to continue to operate. And so it's, it is challenging for the card rooms because it's, in my view, this is again my opinion, it's not necessarily a fair playing field. The card rooms in La Center, they pay lots of taxes over and above the gambling tax. Where their biggest competitor, A-land A, they don't have any of those kinds of tax burden. So, you know, the card rooms have contributed so much to the city for so many years. I mean, if you went back and. I mean, if you went back and came up with an aggregate number of what they've actually contributed to the center since they started operations, I don't know, I think Skip is left, but it's, it's really quite phenomenal. And again, I don't think that the city put itself in a position where we can't benefit if and when the card rooms ever do, you know, continue to do better. I'm thrilled about what's happening with the last frontier. And I agree with you that six months is not a good timeline in order to do any kind of this analysis. But you asked for it, Councilmember Strobin. So this is where we're at. You have the ordinance. We can continue to have the conversation about what the history is. But it's, again, we want to be very careful on how we, we talk about this in public means because again, it will have an impact on what the card rooms are trying to accomplish.
And they might come to us, I'm assuming, if they start making, you know, even higher and higher to say, what happens then? Because if they're like, oh no, now we're creeping up to 12% and, you know, so, but that could be, yeah, another part of that.
I also thought this was gonna be like a work session as well, that we would be sitting there going through it. I didn't realize it would be in a public, or in a, like city council meeting. Does anybody know, we, we used to have a representative from the card room come in at every meeting. Is that a no-go anymore or is that just since COVID?
Well, we had had a representative come from the meetings, but I don't know that that was ever gonna be, that was, I mean, it's up to the card room if they want to send a representative or not. Well, I suspect they listen to the meetings.
Yeah, they know it's gonna.
Either live or they watch the videos, yeah.
Now, it's great to see them doing well, that's for sure. Hopefully it continues.
Again, one is doing well, one, um, not so much. Okay.
Luckily, I mean, we have the sliding scale because they might not be here right now, so.
I'm sorry.
If we didn't have the sliding scale, they might not even be.
Well, I think they got to that critical point.
Yeah, exactly. It's, it's been a good little Band-Aid, so we'll just sit on that rock.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Strobin, for asking for this. Even if your request may have been misunderstood, this was, this was really good information to have. And Mr. Davis's comments earlier in the night, I think, were, were spot on as well. That was, that was an education for a lot of us, you know, and I think, I think for now, the system that's in place is a very, very good system that works for, for all of the parties involved, it seems like. So this was, this was really good information to have.
Good. Yeah, I think that we should be evaluating this, you know, probably on an annual basis or so.
Well, absolutely. I mean, I think it's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's a big part of our budget, both historically and currently, so.
Yeah, I think once we get two years or three years of, yeah, full operation, we can get some good numbers.
Thank you for putting that together, Maria. I do appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
So any other discussion or questions from the council before we move on? Okay, thank you, Maria. Good job. So we did have one item removed from the consent agenda and moved down to items removed from the consent agenda, animal control, so I'll turn it over to Councilmember. Who else you can?
I just wanted to see if we could go over what was in that, sorry, in that interlocal agreement. I mean, before we pass it off, I, it's quite lengthy and I didn't really get the.
I can give a.
Sure you'd be prepared to do that, Brian?
Yeah. History and sort of where.
Sorry, I just saw it right before the meeting and thought it'd be something that we should probably discuss or at least take a little bit better look at.
So for the past several months, we've been exploring the concept of contracting with Clark County Animal Control to provide animal control services in the city here. It's one of the main areas of complaints that we get frequently. And we have a contract in place with the Humane Society of Southwest Washington for boarding of animals. But currently, we have been self-performing animal control duties with city staff, primarily through the police department, but that's sort of fluctuated here recently. So initially, we talked with the county staff about sort of three different levels of service. Option one being the highest level, basically, they would be, you know, you call the city about an animal control complaint. It goes to the county, they respond. They anticipated about an hour of service per call at about $175 an hour, which worked out to roughly, based on the number of the call volumes that we've seen historically, which was 44 a year, about $6,800 annually. Second option was sort of the middle of the road, so that would be more major cases and then, sorry, this is all off the cuff, so I didn't.
Yeah, no, no, you're fine. I appreciate it because this is.
So option two was middle of the road. That would be roughly 25 cases per year, just under $5,000. And then option three, which was sort of the lowest level of service, basically, we would ask for their assistance only on major cases like cruelty, neglect, smites, something like that. That's roughly eight cases a year. They did a little bit higher estimated rate on those of $200 per hour just because those are a little bit more involved cases, so they'll take probably more than an hour on average. That worked out to be about $1,600 per year. So based on conversations internally and with the mayor, responded we'd be interested in something somewhere in that level two or three range. So, you know, minor things like leash law violations, we might be able to handle in-house. But basically have them, a contract established with the animal control so that they could help us respond to not only major cases where there's, you know, an injury or to a person or an animal, but also to some sort of more, you know, frequent, maybe flyer animals or something like that. So what we have in, for the interlocal services agreement would basically be, the calls would come to the city, we would determine at a staff level if we need animal controls assistance or if it's something that we can handle in-house. If we call them out, they will respond, you know, normal business hours during the week at a rate of $175 per hour. And on average, a case takes about an hour of staff time, so ballparking about $175 per time we need the animal control to respond. And they would also be available for emergencies after hours. So if you had some sort of law enforcement case where they discover cruelty to animals or neglect or something like that, they can respond at $180 per hour. So recognizing the, the additional cost for overtime work for the staff. So essentially, I mean, that's the, the bones of it. There's obviously a lot of legal and indemnity language in there. But basically, this is we putting in a contract with animal control so that as we need them, as staff determines that we have a case that require, that we could benefit from their services, that we would be able to call them up and have a mechanism in place for them to respond.
Cool, yeah, I think that's great. I just, you know, because I think it has been something where there's been loose stray aggressive animals and, you know, it used to be, from my understanding, that the police department would take care of or handle those situations and just under our current circumstances. I think that it's great that we're moving forward with at least being able to mitigate some of those issues. So I appreciate you going over that.
Absolutely.
What's the response, oh no, Casey, sorry.
I was just gonna say, so which, which level of service are we gonna contract with?
Well, so we're, it's sort of an à la carte. So the calls will come to the city. If it's something really minor, that city staff has the capability of handling, then we can do that and not pay, you know, the, the rate. But if we call them up, it's an hourly basically rate. So, you know, we would call them, they would respond out here and assist at that hourly rate.
And the response time for stuff like that?
They're generally out in the county area vicinity, you know, the unincorporated areas up here. So I don't have an exact time, I can get that for you, but it, you know, they're, they're out and about in this neck of the woods.
Yeah, I didn't need the exact time, but yeah, I just want to make sure.
I think something to keep in mind is that most of the time, they are working with two people in a county truck. So that, that hourly rate is actually two animal control employees that would come out, deal with the animal. They also have a number of after-hours resources that, that, in fact, just today, I sent out to the county patrol deputies so that they knew that those resources were out there. So I, even if it's the most minor call, the amount of those calls that come in, we would spend way more money in-house than the $6,000 just to call and have somebody come up and, and deal with those, especially since you just call and it's done. So that, that whole thing sounds good to me. I think they're a phenomenal resource. They're, they're much, the, the new manager is very, very active and proactive when it comes to especially criminal complaints involving animals. Not so much the, I mean, they do come out and look at the bites, but the animal cruelty cases and if there's felony level stuff, it's CCSO detectives that come out and help them. So she's done a great job building those relationships. And just in the year, less than a year that she's been here, there's been some significant cases that they've worked throughout the county. They're a little short-staffed right now, like everybody is. So that's why they're, they're only on the radio from eight to five during the week. They are available after hours. So that sounds like a phenomenal rate to me.
Yeah, I have to agree. I'm glad you put that perspective out there, Casey. You know, $6,000 is, is nothing when it comes to people's safety, whether it be children, elderly or anything like that. We shouldn't have to be fearful of a dog getting loose. It should be something that, you know, should be easily restrained at that point and taken care of. So I agree. And, you know, the top tier is something I, I would have no issues saying, yeah, let's go with that.
Okay, just two things I neglected to mention. So one, even though we don't have a contract currently in place, they have been assisting us and not, I believe not even charging us for major animal cases. So again, we don't want to, you know, we want to be a good partner and recognize the efforts that their and their staff are putting in, which is another driver behind this. The reason that we decided to go somewhere below sort of the one call is because just it wasn't included in this year's budget. So that's something that we thought we would discuss is we're putting together next year's budget if we want to increase the level of service to maybe that more option one, sort of, you pick up the phone and if you have an animal control issue in the city, it goes to the county staff, so.
I just, you can't put a price tag on people's safety in my eyes, so. So do I need to make a motion?
Well, that would be great.
I'm motion to pass the interlocal agreement to provide animal control services to the city of the center.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the interlocal agreement to provide animal control services to the city. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. Thank you very much, Brian.
Yeah, sorry to spring that on you, but I appreciate it.
You did well.
Keeping you on your toes.
So the last item we have on the agenda this evening is adjournment. If I could get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Oh, yeah. I had one thing, I just wanted to add an agenda item to the next meeting and maybe from there moving forward, if we could maybe just have some open discussion about police staffing.
Okay.
If that could be.
Yeah, so could you be more specific in what it is that you're requesting? I mean, Chief Richards is not here this evening, but we should get the information to him.
Yeah, just current updates of what our, what our direction is going forward with contracting and what that looks like and what steps we're taking, where we're at in those movements and progress, progress, basically, yeah. And I just think it should be a, an action item that we continually look at just so we kind of, we know where we're at and then also the citizens know.
Well, I think, I think also it would be, it would be helpful and reassuring to both of the cities that are being talked to, to know that it's still a very high priority item for us. And, you know, understandably, if somebody does enter into a contract with us, they're going to have to hire additional staff, which is a, which is a risk to their city. And as, as long as it's, if it's, it just seems that if it's quiet and it's just kind of laying low, then we're not doing anything to reassure whatever agency that is, that we're serious about this. We have the budget, we have the, the commitment of the council to, to move forward with that.
Perception, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that, those messages have been conveyed. I mean, again, it's, you know, we as a council, we're anxious to get, move this forward. We as a city are anxious to move this forward. But the other jurisdictions that we're talking to, they also have a lot of hurdles that they have to get over in dealing both through the financial issues, the political issues, the staffing issues is going to be a big one. So they are doing their due diligence. Again, there's ongoing conversations with those cities, but right now, they're working through their analysis internally. So that just takes time. So to your point, yes, we can update the council and the community on a regular basis. But quite frankly, we don't have a lot of updates right now because we're waiting for the feedback from the cities that we're working with. And as I had mentioned earlier, that we will have meetings next week with both cities, Woodland and Ridgefield. I'll be meeting with the city manager next week. And, you know, hopefully we'll have some more things that we can actually start discussing. But right now, it's more that the cities that we're working with are talking with their staff and, and their council as well. So, but I do want to assure everybody that this is something that's a high priority for the city. We are doing the best we can to move it forward. It's just, as Liz pointed out earlier this evening, process is slow and it takes time. And there's a lot of things that are involved.
Yeah, I just think it's imperative that we, you know, keep it on the forefront and it's good for people to be, everybody to be on the same page and know where we're at. And obviously, we'll, we want to be respectful of those other communities and agencies and their efforts that they're doing to try and come up to an agreement with us. But we can also have our own discussions about it as well.
I, I agree with you, Sean. I think, I think a progress reported at each of the meetings would be sufficient to suffice that. And even if there is no progress at that point, at least to have someone stand up and say, hey, you know what? There's been no progress made. And again, the next week, no progress made. Okay, so now, now it starts putting it on the record, hey, we, we want to push this and we're not getting anywhere. So is this a, a direction that we need to go, right? Or do we need to start looking at other avenues three, four months down the road? Because we're talking a long time without a, a full police force here or protection services like that, so.
Understood.
I, I have to agree with you on that, Sean.
Yeah, I agree. No progress.
So can I make a motion? Do I need to make a motion?
Well, I think, I think we'll relay the information to Chief Richardson and then the updates will.
And it'll be added to the next agenda.
Yeah.
I don't think.
Council's direction is clear. Yeah, the direction is clear. Yeah. So we will, I'll ask Chief Richardson to give the council update. And if there's no updates, that'll be the report. There's no updates, so that's the best we can do at this point.
Thank you.
So any other topics for discussion? And not that this was, you know, to bring this up at the end of the meeting is fine, but if you wanted to bring that up during your council member report, that's fine too. So, but again, appreciate the, the input.
Did anybody win that big lottery?
No, it's over $1 billion.
Okay, if I could get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Attending.